No, no, I say you so much. Yeah, sure. Those are broken.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for being too late. Mr. Ruger and I were in a private meeting, so I apologize profusely. So we're gonna get this baby off the, off the ground here. The first item on the agenda is boards in commission interviews.
Hey, everyone. So I'm just gonna give a little introduction and if you have any questions before we start interviewing, just let me know. So since February sixth, there hasn't been a new appointment to any of our boards. Since then, I've been advertising like crazy. Radio, chamber, website, Facebook, newspaper. And so I've been collecting applications. Today, we have five. In your packet, and as well, um, sorry, put me back. What I have on your chairs there was the last advertisement that I sent out. Just for your reference. In your packet, the first face sheet will show who's here tonight and what, um, what they're applying for. It's all in alpha order. The second sheet is a list of suggestive questions. Feel free to use them, feel free to use your own, just suggested question. The next page is a list of the boards and commissions and a brief summary of how many members are they want, if there's any kind of buyback, so that you know. The next sheet has the schedule of when they meet. And then the last is all the applications. Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay. Let's have that.
The first applicant is to the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission. There's three vacancies and one applicant. Tony Vazquez is Mr. Vazquez here. Step forward, sir. First of all, Mr. Vazquez, thank you for putting in an application for the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission. Um, I think because there's five of you, that we should start right away. I'll start, I'll alternate from the right to the left, so we, everybody has a chance to be the first one. So, Ms. Ogletree, who?
Mr. Vazquez, I'm the liaison at Arts and Culture Commission. I was happy to see your application, especially because you have a background in art. What kind of arts have you pursued during so far in your life?
I've never pursued it professionally, but I've done it my whole life. Right now, I'm doing watercolor, doing watercolor, which I've never been very good at. And I'm doing a big machete, I'm trying to do some big, large big machete. But I've done auto painting, sculpture, branding, everything.
Are there any things that you think that the city of Trinidad should do with regard to public art?
Make more of it. I think it's wonderful what we've been doing in the town. And I'd like to see more of that, and that's kind of why I'm pursuing this position. I think it's great just having art in general, and people getting engaged. I'd like to see this place become an art hub. It's getting there, not quite there, but I think we're moving in that direction, so that's kind of what I'd like to see.
Thank you for your application, sir. To piggyback on council and Ogletree, what do you feel is needed to enhance and benefit the Arts Council?
I met a friend, I went to one meeting, they invited me to come and check it out. I'm not sure about, I'm still a little hesitant about what they're doing. It looks like they're approving different arts projects or, if you're concerned, that's very, uh, pretty vulnerable on it. When I was in being, they were talking about doing a mural with the, uh, a new animal shelter. So that was kind of interesting to see, that kind of stuff going on. So I'm really glad, and I'm not sure what they see, uh, they're actually doing, but, uh...
Thank you for your interest.
I'm sure that you got interested in the board, but for what reason do you kind of want to get on it?
Well, I've been interested in quite a few years, but I've, uh, I've been on Articade Board for years. And that took all my time, especially over the last couple of years when they, uh, were running out of funds, you know, volunteers, and it was kind of sad to see all that happening. But, and for you said, I've been interested in the Arts Board and also maybe the parts of recreation. I'm a outdoors person, so I was interested in one of those two.
And you have time to do all this?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I mean, no interference with?
Yeah, definitely.
And I'm sure, well, I'm glad you put in for it, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I think I already heard you answer a question, but I was thinking, you've already attended the, you've already attended the meetings, correct?
I went to the one last time.
You went to the one last time?
Met some people there, and it looked very interesting. I like what they're presenting.
Thank you.
Appreciate you putting in application. Do you have friends, family on this board? And do you get, how do you get along with board members, seeing that you've been on board with the, uh, what is it, the cards?
Articade.
Articade, yeah.
Oh, that's great, we had a fantastic relationship with Articade people.
What is your relationship with the Art Council, Art and Culture?
I've got good people that are there, and I also am very friendly and outgoing.
Any family in it?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, no.
Friends and that, yeah?
No, well...
You know some people?
I know some.
You connected?
Built family.
Mr. Williams?
Uh, Mr. Vazquez, thank you for your interest. Obviously, it sounds like you have some experience with, um, you know, boards. Civic involvement in any capacity is, is very much appreciated by us. And I think, um, you know, bringing a unique and fresh view and your voice to the board would be really appreciated. And we have three vacancies and one applicant, so we all very much appreciate that. Thank you for putting in. I, I don't have any questions, but I really appreciate that you're here today and willing to pull some of the weight of that. So, uh, thank you.
So anytime somebody comes and asks for a job that you didn't, don't get paid for, I think the question is different. And I know from past experience with Articade, that was a huge investment in your time. I know they were a very good organization, so I, you know, I echo everybody else's sentiments. Thank you so much for applying for this position. Do you have any questions on us? You have the time to attend meetings and?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, we're good to go. Thank you, Mr. Vazquez. Thank you for coming tonight, today as well. The next commission we are interviewing for is the Historic Preservation Commission. We only have one applicant and two vacancies, and the applicant is Matthew Neff. Mr. Neff, are you here?
Yep.
Please come forward. So I guess you know the drill already.
Yep.
Just give us a, a brief reason why historic preservation is your thing.
Uh, so I've got a background in archaeology and history. I did professionally for seven years or so. I grew up next to a historic town, and I think Trinidad's got one of the best, you know, main streets and historic areas that I've seen in a long time, that's still functioning, and I just want it to continue to be preserved and uplift it wherever we can and still use it to the best.
All right, Mr. Vazquez, thank you. Mr. Williamson?
Again, I hate to sound like a broken record, but we have, we have more vacancies than we do applicants. And in reading your experience qualifications, I, I think we're very fortunate to have you here. It sounds like you'll have a great grasp on that, and you can add to the knowledge and, uh, opinion of the board. So, um, I would be curious, have you had any experience in, in this sort of situation for serving on board?
No.
It's the first time. Interacting with others? Then, in that case, I appreciate you stepping out and volunteering your time and talents for this. Or any other questions that are made in council?
Mr. Thurman?
What is your favorite dinosaur?
So, archaeologists, we love the dinosaurs.
What do you have to do?
We do, we do just humans, just humans.
The catacombs and all?
I've not been to catacombs, my focus has always been on North America.
Yeah, who's your, who's your focus on America?
So predominantly, I started off owning a hunter gear app, so these would be like the first peoples that came across the Eurasian steppe into North America, that would focus on big game hunting.
Uh, once again, I'd just like to reiterate, thank you for showing your interest in serving our community. It is a, sometimes a thankless job. The only question I have, how are you with conflict resolution?
It doesn't matter if I like you or not, we're gonna move forward and work professionally.
Uh, thank you. And do you have any, what is your favorite building in Trinidad, which one?
So, a personal favorite, 'cause I live on Anamis, is that building right there on Anamis and Main. I like the architecture, and also it's one of those where I see it, it's kind of falling apart, and to me, that's one of those, like, okay, let's try and repair it and use it again, restore it.
Mr. Shih?
Again, yeah, everything, thank you for putting in for it, and I'm sure that you'll be an asset to the board. And there's no use asking questions, I know you're interested in getting in and out, she would put in for it. So thank you very much for putting in for it.
Thank you as well. It sounds like your expertise and your skill set is very well in check. Uh, what other perspective would you bring to the board?
So honestly, I'm not coming into this with preconceived notions about what we should or shouldn't do. I wanna get in there, see what they're facing right now, see what we can do, and then work from there. I don't, I don't wanna come in and upset the public, you know, people have been working hard for years. So I can't say for sure what I would bring, other than just my background in college. I've worked on historic restoration projects for years, and so I kind of know the ins and outs of what agencies are looking for as far as development.
It's good enough for me.
Historic preservation is one of the only boards that the city has that does quasi judicial kind of hearings when someone is asking for their building to be locally landmarked as a local landmark. Um, is that something that you're familiar with and comfortable with, that you could sit and make a judgment on other people's?
Yeah, so actually, when I, you know, professionally, I would, um, I worked actually with Central City for a while, and they had to do a bunch of bridge replacement, and so we went through and did a lot of the survey work, and we were the ones that wrote up the reports recommending, is it eligible, is it not? What are the impacts going to do? How can we mitigate impacts to the historic aspects? So obviously, I've been on this board, so I, and I've been in the board in this capacity. I can't say for sure that I would just immediately know everything, but I at least am comfortable in that, in that question.
That sounds like a really good, relevant experience, I'm glad to hear that. This board in particular seems to draw people that have really good educational backgrounds, and I think you would enjoy working with. No more questions.
Mr. Neff, you, you sound like you're more than qualified for a position on this board. Have you been to any of the meetings of this commission?
I have not.
Okay. You might do well to go to a meeting, but I mean, that's not gonna impact whether you're appointed to that board or not. Just understand that every commission the city council has, you are not, you are an advisory commission to city council. Do you have an issue with that at all? Okay, that's all I need to know. I would strongly suggest that you go to a meeting, and, oh, you're gonna probably go in right there. I appreciate it, you know, historic preservation has got a strong tie to our economic development endeavors here in Trinidad. So not only because we have a beautiful downtown, but it's, your position is gonna be really important, and I thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Position number three is the Library Advisory Board, there's two vacancies. We have one applicant. The first applicant is Julie Morris, are you here, Ms. Morris?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you again. Give us a little foreword and one on Julie Morris.
Julie Morris moved here from Normal, Oklahoma, seven years ago. I'm a retired public health nurse and was on many boards and commissions related to that. I have a six-year-old granddaughter. I had a lot of responsibilities in her early childcare on account of, there's no childcare, listen. But she's six now, and I think I had the time to devote to this. All right, so I think you're persistent.
It's good to see you. Uh, the only thing I noticed in particular about your application is that you said you only had three hours a month to devote to this. What will you do if it requires more than that?
I'll make time to do it.
And I'm glad to hear that you have a lot of board and committee experience, and I'm sure that would come in handy. And I believe Mr. Williamson is the liaison, are you still the liaison to the library?
Yeah.
I just wondered if you had...
But I have been involved, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much for your interest. I just wanted to ask you a question, how do you view the role of a library board member?
Well, I would say that the library board member would advise the, either the council or the library about what programs to have, maybe new collections to have, public education, those sorts of things. Just to advise.
Okay, thank you. Well, have you had a chance to talk to our librarian and stuff?
Yes, I have.
Is the librarian, are you satisfied with her work?
I think she's doing a really fine job, and...
Yes, excellent.
I'm a big reader, so I've been in and out of the library a lot. Really with her makes you do a good job.
Yes, thank you. Once again, thank you. Public services really needed, and we appreciate you coming and helping. We've had some conversations before, a couple times. So, uh, I'm just really glad to see your interest in it, and you pretty much answered my question of experience. So, thank you.
So you've been here, uh, signing applications, so you've been here seven years?
Yes, sir.
What have you been doing with your time since you've been in Trinidad?
Well, I've been helping to rear my little granddaughter a good deal of the time. I'm a vegetable gardener. Uh, I like to play golf when I get the opportunity. And I'm teaching my little granddaughter to fish.
All right, you hit all, hit all the buttons right there. With your application, I'm sure that the librarian will be happy to have you still.
All right, sincerely, thank you for being here. Again, I don't think it can be overstated, civic service is very much appreciated. And so, uh, having spent some time with the library board, it's a highly collaborative board, and so, I mean, you just need to have a willingness to get in there and participate. And they've been generating a lot of really good activity. I mean, um, I think everyone in the room probably can attest to, uh, the library really becoming, um, a jewel for our city and something that's to be proud of. So it sounds like you have a lot of experience that will contribute to that, so not to overstate it, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Once again, very qualified, if not overqualified, for any advisory board. I was the liaison for the library board when I first started on city council. And I noticed they do a lot of extracurricular activities away from the library and not in normal library hours. Is that something that you would be willing to participate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you, ma'am. The next board that we're interviewing for is the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. This is different from the other boards, there's one vacancy and two applicants. The first applicant I'll bring up is Jillian Maria. Jillian, are you here? That kind of narrows it down.
Sometimes you get points for showing up.
Sometimes it kind of works. Ashley Ryan?
Look at that.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, Ashley. Give us a little information on your, on yourself as well.
Well, Ashley Ryan, I'm the manager of Native Roots. I have served the last year on the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. Almost most of that as the chair. There was a little bit in the beginning, that was a little rough, we moved out. I have four kids, age ranges twenty-five down to eleven, so my daughter is going to sixth grade here in Trinidad next year. Wish me luck, it's that age group. Would you guys like to know anything about what we've been working on, or would you like just to?
No, no, we, we wanna know about you.
Been working a lot, like, thanks.
Ashley, uh, and Mayor, to, to be honest, I don't have any questions personally. I mean, um, you've, you've spoken to this a lot, and your enthusiasm is always on the forefront, and I, I so appreciate that. We, it, it's obvious you have a heart to serve the community, so thank you for that. And, you know, I think all of us up here know your history and hospitality, and, um, you have a good, clear understanding of management of stores and how that revolves around people coming to this town. So I think you'll offer invaluable insight, so, uh, thank you for your enthusiasm and perseverance. It still looks like we have more vacancies or matching applicants pretty well, so that's, that's it for what I have to say.
Mr. Thurman?
Ashley, welcome back, look at your face. Um, a question about the tax advisory board. Where do you, since you're on the board and been on the board, where do you see that going in the next year or so? As far as being streamlined as a board?
Uh, we're actually starting phase two of our newness, uh, so we're gonna be meeting more with the community. So we're gonna have some business meeting with the businesses, uh, we're gonna meet the residents, and we're gonna try to meet with the other boards on a more regular basis, to where we get that communication lines really open with everyone, so that everyone can contribute and be a part of the board and feel like they're being heard.
So many thank yous in this thing, so, but thank you again for your dedicated service and continuing to service. I always just love what you bring to every meeting that I've watched and historical right now. Your experience just speaks volumes, and I thank you so much for your commitment to us, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I comment with the rest of the council on that, that you've been here before, and it seems like you're willing to use to help the city and do the actual, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Ashley. I've interviewed Mr. Ruger, Mr. Chatterley about the lodger's tax increase and possibly putting it to the vote of the people again this November. Do you find any other challenges or opportunities while serving on this board?
Um, that has been, we, um, not many people are watching the meetings, so they're not really understanding what is we're doing or why we're making the decisions we're making. So part of what we wanna move forward with again is to use a form of communication to do some education about what the board is, uh, what our goals are. We wanna come up with a solid streamlined metric for our decisions about any kind of funding, uh, so that everyone has a clear understanding of what that's gonna look like going forward. Uh, we're just looking to really try to educate the community about why, what is lodging tax? Why do we want to increase that? What can we use these funds for, that kind of thing.
And Mr. Ryan, how are you? I, I just wanted to say I got the pleasure of sitting in on one of your meetings, and the mayor wasn't available, and I took you in, and I truly saw you knew how to run a really crisp, professional meeting. It was, it was very impressive, and so I'm grateful that you're reappointed.
More importantly, I think the other board members are happy. I, it would be a disservice to you to ask your questions, because I know what you've gone through. It was almost a complete restructure of the Lodging Tax Board when you all came on. Eric, the city changed what we wanted the Lodging Tax Board to do, and it seems like you and the board went through that with as little issues as possible, so I thank you very much, Ashley.
I appreciate it. We're still working through some details, but we're gonna get there, it's gonna be smooth, so...
Mayor, I have one question.
Sure, sure.
Um, you mentioned, um, not a lot of people are viewing the meetings.
Well...
And how, how, how does that inhibit progress? And if people, if more people watch the meeting, what would that change, I was curious?
I feel like the, the, the reason I say that is because, I can't say not a lot of people are watching, but we're getting feedback from people who are obviously not watching. And it just is... It is a common occurrence, and I just feel like there's a misunderstanding of what we're doing now, and people feel like we're maybe gatekeeping something or, um, picking and choosing certain things, and we're just really trying to work through everything. And I think that having a structured metric would work that out.
I, I just, I had a, a crazy thought, it probably is a crazy thought, but, um, you know, um, in, is there some way that you might be able to reach out to, um, local businesses and just ask them for, um, ambassadors that might attend the meetings to, I don't know, it, it would help awareness, it could, it could promote, like symbiotic relationships with the businesses, so just something like that to increase, um, general awareness? It's just a thought that was, that was generated here, I probably shouldn't talk to you after.
Okay, no, we, um, we actually have, uh, the agenda item next meeting, uh, which I can't vote in the meeting, but I can attend and definitely give my opinion. But we have an agenda item to discuss what those meetings are gonna look like, and I will definitely... And I will definitely bring up, maybe reaching out beforehand for an ambassador. Uh, we're just gonna kind of lay out whatever method the city has to communicate with businesses. We're gonna use that to just send out a blanket invitation, come to this meeting, which I think we're gonna try to schedule the first one on the twenty-seventh. So it might take some minute to get it all worked out, but I'm hoping we can get forward to some.
Thank you.
Mr. Shure has an invitation.
Yes, Ashley.
Um, kind of on what Aaron said, but a little bit different was uh, if we do try to get that back on the ballot, that sales tax deal, what do you think you can do to help us get that passed to get people to understand that that would really help us and also the community? And it's a tax, you know, not really the people of Trinidad pay, but you know, the tourists and lodging tax. And I, I think if we can get that passed, that would really help our finances in a lot of departments, recreation especially, and also for some of the other projects. Is there some way we can get with the board, with the council, and then work to try to get that worked on to pass through? I mean, is that something that seems feasible to you?
Yes, of course. The Colorado Tourism Office has resources for just this, how to educate the public, things that we can show them of the difference in if we get this much lodging tax, this is the amount that less that you'll have to pay in taxes. There are a lot of educational pieces on that website that I'm hoping to tap into. Right down to scripts for radio ads. It's about everything.
Mayor, I can't help but notice.
No, no, and I, I was just thinking that maybe best to like kind of strategize council and the lodging tax advisory board. I think it's a very good question, uh which is kind of how we're going to approach this. And maybe not as part of the interview, ask what you can do to help, right? I mean, good question, it's a good conversation point. I'm sorry, but I just think it may be a conversation for another time if you know what I mean, if that's okay. I'm sorry, Councilman.
No, that's, that's fine. We want to bring that out. And that's part of the interview because she wants the job. So that's, I think that would be a good question to ask.
And, and I apologize. I think it is, I just think it's a more of a conversation we may want to have, kind of, if that's okay.
Like, we'll get on to a work agenda.
Yeah.
For our later session.
Okay, that's great.
That way we can hash it out.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you. Item number two is the Trinidad Golf Course Feasibilities Study. It is presented by Serious Golf Advisors and at the San Francisco. Can I, can I please take a minute to ask Mr. Ruger and Mr. Young's question?
Yes, please.
You can continue, I just need a second. We're gonna have to take a break. This whole tree needs something.
Right? That would be fun, man.
I'm gonna get beat up.
You get a phone gallop. It's not a yellow phone, it's a yellow phone gallop.
No good families.
Everybody's going different directions. Let's go have a meeting. Three of us.
How are you?
I could have, I could have brought my e-mail. John, hoping to come. Oh yeah, looking forward to it.
Where's your legal pad?
We're, we're waiting for Councilman O'Trick to come back to the meeting. And while we're doing this, I want to advise the audience, this is a work session. There's no decisions during work session. It's just really to educate council and give them the information on this feasibility study. I've been told by Mr. Ruger that this, all the information of this report will be posted on the City of Trinidad website. So if you want to look on it, there's a lot of information. So if you want to look at it after the meeting, get a bit a day or two, but it will be available for everybody to read. I think we can probably start without you, aren't you thinking?
Yeah. She's heard it before.
Yes. All right, gentlemen, please introduce yourselves and, and tell us what respective company you represent.
Ready for our explosive presentation? I said you're ready for my explosive presentation.
Yeah.
My name's John Wade, married with two children. I, oh, sorry. My company is Serious Golf Advisors. Uh, we are a golf course consulting company. We've been doing this for over thirty years, specializing in working with municipalities. And um, I was here uh almost a year ago to start this whole project going. And it has been one of the pleasures uh in my career to, to work with the city and work on this project. Because I think it is such a worthwhile. For this part of the study, I have brought along esteemed colleague, Head of Acton, ASGCA. You want to grab yourself a little bit?
Uh, I, I live in Colorado, so I'm a local here. But I've worked in twenty-three states, Canada, Mexico, and Australia. Probably worked on a hundred and fifty different projects um across all of those countries. But uh, my home base is Colorado and most of my work happens right here. And uh, I too am very excited about the potential that we're about to share. So uh, it's been, it's been a lot of fun to be here.
Before we continue, just an FYI, you don't, you're not mic'd up and you're speaking to us. But if you could speak a little louder for everybody in the back to hear you as well. And if the people in the back want to get over a little bit so you can hear better, you can, please feel free to do that as well.
It's usually not profitable, so. Just to, oh my gosh, we got sound effects. Okay. As I mentioned, we were here, uh, this project started nearly a year ago, July fourth. And in that first part of the study, we were just looking at the operations of the current golf course and looking for ways to improve it. Um, and during the course of that, uh, you know, I came to realize that this golf course as it sits now is basically servicing the members of the club and that's about it. It's not doing anything else for the city or for, uh, or have a significant economic impact on the city. However, and looking at this town, which I fell in love with, as I mentioned to you guys last time I was here, I fell in love with it the first day I was here. And I greatly appreciate the transitioning that I see happening before my eyes. Of going from a mining town to a more of a tourism-based economy. And I think golf can play a huge role in that effort, but not as it's currently sitting. So the board of commissioners agreed last year to embark in the second part, which was to study the feasibility of improving this golf course. So with a specific goal of uh maybe attracting more tourists to the area and thereby helping the overall economy. We believe that, you know, this site, this course has the potential to be a lot more than it currently is. So we proposed uh to look at first and foremost, adding a driving range to the current golf course. That was a priority of the golf membership and of the, the current customers. So we looked at just doing that. Then we looked at um keeping it a nine-hole course, but renovating it so that it is more attractive to tourists and to actually try to make it into a nine-hole resort-style golf course. Knowing that golfers prefer an eighteen-hole course over a nine-hole layout by a wide, wide margin. So there's a handicap there. So the next part of the study was to expand it to an eighteen-hole course. There's plenty of land available, um, well, available in the sense that it's not developed, surrounding the course that would provide ample room for eighteen holes. But we also have an existing eighteen-hole facility that is now closed, Cougar Canyon. And so uh, we contemplated that renovating a existing course, even one that's been closed for fourteen years, may be less expensive than building a one from scratch. So we wanted to pursue that as an, as an option. And then look at potential economic benefits of these projects. However, when I started getting this thing, uh, you may remember, last time I was here, I brought my wife. And uh, we, she fell in love with this uh town just as much as I did. And so we were serious about, wow, maybe this is a place we could retire. So of course, my wife naturally started looking at houses to, you know, what's available. Not that we're ready. When are you retired?
Three years, six months, and I think twenty days.
Not that she's counting. So she looked at, you know, what's available here. And to our dismay, there wasn't anything that was available that would be of interest to us. So as we started launching into this, I kept that thought in mind. And uh, I realized as I looked into it more and more that this town has a high housing crisis and it's headed, and it's meant. So on my own, I decided, well, you know, if we're gonna be looking at eighteen holes, there's so much land, why not incorporate housing as part of this study? So this is a value added. This was not part of the original proposal, normally charging extra for it. But I said, let's look at that. And then, as we got going, we saw, you know, we got lands to south of the course. But look at all this nice land to the south or to the east-west of the course that is also available. And there's this nice huge tunnel that connects the two, uh, that you could drive a train, maybe two trains through side by side. It's huge. So again, value added, we said, well, why not go whole hog and add twenty-seven holes? And while we're at it, let's put in a resort hotel. So these are the five scenarios that we looked at. A1 is to just add a range to the current course. And what would that do? A2 is to elevate the golf course to a resort-quality golf course and add the range. And the, uh, the third, can, can people hear me back there?
John, there's a microphone if you want, try to ask.
Yeah, well, if people are comfortable with it, that's okay. We can have a, uh, look at making it a resort eighteen-hole course. Scenario CC is renovating Cougar Canyon. And then scenario C is a whole hog resort, twenty-seven holes with a resort hotel. So, um, there's my page now here. One of the important points, since we're talking about golf, people may wonder, well, is golf a good investment at this time? And the answer is absolutely. The pandemic actually was very, very good for golf. Participation is way up, grounds are way up nationwide. And in particular, golf tourism is nearing an all-time high. And from an operating standpoint, traveling golfers are your best customers. Because they have, uh, when you're traveling, you don't have the price sensitivity that you do when you're a local, you know? So, and they're seeking a unique experience. So they're not gonna be interested in playing the run of the middle golf course. They want something special. So that's why you have to elevate the quality of the course. And of course, they spend more money on things like tourism and food and beverage. So now we get into scenario one and turn it over to Kess.
Okay, um, so as we go through this, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be telling a bit of the story. So uh, the beginning of this story is the nine-hole option. And it was, as John said, to add a driving range to the golf course.
Excuse me a second, is there any way you can project?
I can.
Oh, I'll give these other screens.
No?
Yeah, unfortunately, no, sorry.
Well, you're all welcome to reposition yourself so you can see it.
And we can angle this a bit more to.
I apologize.
Can you still see?
Can I, council? How's that?
We are here. Does anybody want to move? I mean, now's the time.
Might want to move to that side of the room. Can you close those shades behind?
And Mayor, like, like we said, we will get this report out so people can look at it. Does that help him?
Yes.
Do we need to turn the lights off here?
Shut them all down.
Are we good? Okay. All right.
All right, Kevin, you're.
Okay, so the first step was to look at the driving range, like John said. So we wanted to, the current range is removed from the clubhouse. We wanted to get the range close to the clubhouse, better operations, better economics.
Kevin, let me stop you real quick. Driving range in this case is in quotes, because it's not a true driving range. It's not, nobody knows it's there, number one. Number two, you have to bring your own balls, the check your own balls. It's not what customers would call a real driving range. It's more of just a practice area for members.
The existing range is that way. This is obviously not. But in order to do that, we had to reroute four holes on the course. So we're not going to spend a ton of time on this. I'm just trying to set the stage so it tells the story for the next phase and the next phase and the next phase. But in order to get the range in there, the road that accesses kind of the parking lot, there's a little bit of room to just slightly relocate that road. And that makes all the difference to allow for a big enough driving range to fit in this space. It does require some netting to go around the driving range. That's going to be true on the concept A2 when we talk again. But essentially, this is creating four holes and then the remaining five holes essentially stay the same. However, I'll say that when we create the four holes and the range, we have also included in the cost to fix the greens, rebuild the bunkers. The irrigation system needs to be replaced. There's a lot of needs on infrastructure that needs to happen within that existing course. So we didn't want to have a black and white scenario, four holes that are new and five holes that are different. So we just upgraded that, and that's reflected as we go into the next. Oh, I should have done there, but we'll go, go ahead and go into the next slide. Like I said, there's just some infrastructure, some bunkers and some cart pads that are broken and things like that around the golf course. It just, it just needs to be improved. It's kind of lived its life cycle. So the cost on concept A1 is, is around $6 million, but then there's another $2.5 million that go into the road and the netting, little bit maintenance, expansion, clubhouse, some minor clubhouse improvements. Then I think that we go on to the next slide.
All right. And I apologize for sitting. I've got a bad back and I can't stand for one or two minutes. And people can't stand for me either. So there we go. Revenue that projects out over 10 years is about $11 million. We're projecting starting out at about 11,000 rounds, which currently we're doing about 8,500 rounds. So that's the, that difference is the impact of the range. If we assume financing this entire project at 3.5% over 15 years, plus within the capital fund to, you know, fund for future capital investments, equipment and capital improvements, you could see those lines at the bottom. Then we look at the net cash flow after all of those deductions. And we find that over the course of 10 years, we're losing about $10 million. So it's going to cost us an additional $10 million to do this. And that works out to a negative ROI of about negative 3.2% a year. So not a real good return. It does add a significant revenue stream with the driving range. And most importantly, it allows for the development of new golfers, which is desperately needed. And it will attract more regional play, but it's not going to do much for tourism at all. And the cons are it's expensive, the course will need to be closed for a year, it's going to require netting, which is not only expensive but unattractive. And it's, it's just not likely ever to pay for itself. And it's going to still require using the potable water that is currently used to irrigate the course, which is definitely another expense. So we move on to A2.
Okay, so A2, continuing on with this story, we're not going to talk, I'll go to the next slide, John. I think we zoom in a little closer. So we're not going to talk about the range or these four holes, because that's what we just talked about in A1. So what A2 does is it builds upon that. And what you were, on the other six holes, what we were missing were the opportunities that the inherent land offers that we don't really go and play into. So there's a, there's actually a beautiful canyon that goes through the middle of a golf course that we play around, but we don't really get into it, see it, touch it, feel it. And that's oftentimes what makes for great and interesting golf holes. So we wanted to take advantage of the existing land that it sits on. And so that's what basically concept A2 is about. The other one that's highlighted here in blue is we've been told that there used to be a bridge that crosses that canyon, some sort of a, I've been told it's a suspension bridge or however that was. It's not there anymore, obviously. But we have put in through the routing, the inclusion of that. We called it an iconic bridge. We'll show that more on that in later concepts. But that's concept A2. A2 takes the features and it upgrades it a little bit more than it does in A1. So now we're, we're adding a few more bunkers. We're enhancing the golf course just another level up. So it does get a little bit, as John describes it, a little bit more resorty feel. And the entire nine holes really is, is all that it can be on the existing property. I'll let you go on to the next slide. Oh, sorry, then we're into costs. So you can see, it's about $2.5 million more to be upgrading the rest of the course. So that's up to $8.5 million. And then there still is that, you know, almost $3 million in infrastructure costs that are maintenance, clubhouse, roadwork, netting, same type of scenario. You can see the difference between those is, it's, the difference is really just the, the new holes, the adding of the bridge and things like that to elevate the course to take advantage of the existing site even better.
As far as what the impact of this is, because we're going to resort quality, we need to charge resort prices. That's not only to recover the cost, but it's actually marketing strategy. Because in the mind of the consumer, there is a strong correlation between price you paid and perceived quality. So you can actually price a resort course too cheap so that people won't play it because they don't think it's any good. So it does require a significant price jump. To take the sting out of it, we are proposing what I call the Trinidad card, which is like a VIP card, that for locals, we may charge $10 for. But outsiders, we charge $50 for. So this is a way of giving the residents a break. And of course, the Trinidad card gives you a much lower discount. So we're basically sticking it to the tourists if you wanted. So the tourists are paying the most, highest price where as local golfers will have an opportunity to pay much less. So you know, before we're at $11 million, now we're at $15 million for 10 years. And the cash flow over 10 years is a little bit better at $9 million. But yet because the cost is substantially higher, we end up with actually a positive NOI of just a little under 1%. So we're actually on the positive side. And eventually, the course, that cash flow will become positive, as you can see the trend. After 15 years, that's paid off and then the cash flow becomes positive.
Mary, ask a quick question.
Sure, sure. I'm only going to ask it because I think it's going to pertain to future modeling. When you're doing that cash flow modeling, what sort of predictive analysis are you doing to generate cash flow? And because that, that's drawing in a lot of unknowns. I mean, you're going to have to get visitors per year. I suppose you can do that by referencing other locations. You have to predict some sort of advertising schedule. Can you speak a little bit to how you're doing cash flow modeling for ROI?
Yeah, we go into considerable detail on that in the report. You know, in the interest of time, you know, we're skipping a lot of that detail. But yes, we try to take the factors that we know. And a lot of it is based on experience. You know, I've literally looked at thousands of golf courses in my career. So I'm very familiar with what works, what doesn't work, and have a good fundamental idea of what, what is available. We did get tourism information, what is available, which was pathetic. I will mention that. That is a weakness in this area is that we do not have data on the actual number of tourists that come into the area. We do not have data on the number of overnight visitors that come into the area. So I had to do some estimating by calling and getting occupancy rates and getting, trying to basically create that information from scratch. But yeah, we try to get into much detail as, as we can on all the operating expenses. Again, based on experience and similar quality courses and taking as many factors as we can. We use the inflation rate of 3%. Current inflation, you know, is about 2.5% over the last 20 years. So we try to be conservative in, in everything we did. I believe our numbers are conservative. I believe that the performance will be much better than what we're projecting. But, you know, if I presented what I really think will happen on some of these scenarios, people would laugh at me. And, but my experience is, is that those projections have come true more than they had not. So, so we're looking at a higher-quality course. It's going to not just attract more regional play, but it's going to actually cause tourists to come here just for golf. Because it is a resort, and there aren't very many resort nine-hole courses in the entire country. You know, you'd be hard pressed to find one. So it is kind of a unique experience. But a nine-hole course will never draw as much as an 18-hole course, never. But it will do much better than what the regular course would have done. You're still having netting, and it will take about 20 years to pay for itself, but it will pay for itself. But you're still using the potable water. Now, I mentioned that we thought about adding residential to all of this when we're expanding to 18 holes. Obviously, nine holes, we don't have any room for it. So when we went to 18 holes, we thought about adding residential. So I conducted a feasibility study, again, value-added. And so what I did for this is that I looked at every single sale that happened in 2003 in this area. You know, I used Trulia and, I can't remember the other one, but I, I used databases that are out there that record not only what the MLS has, but even some TISBOS. In total, there were 162 homes that sold and 59 lots. That right there is important information. The ratio of lots to home sales is extraordinarily high for any city. And that tells me something, that, you know, people are willing to buy a lot and build rather than buy an existing home. So we looked further. The median sale price of these homes, after getting rid of the fixer-uppers and the mobile homes, didn't count that, the median price was $191,000. That compares to the statewide average that's over three times that amount, $611,000. So there's tremendous value there that people can look at as an attractive thing. But it also tells us that quality of housing. But here's what really stuck out. The average age of the homes that sold was 73 years. Over 40% of the homes sold were over 100 years old. Now, I want you to put yourself as a retiree. I know for a lot of you, that's a long way off. But retirees don't want to buy a 100-year-old house. They're looking for less things. They're looking for something to worry-free and relax. They don't want to be fixing up things all the time. And retirees is one of your best market opportunities. Another great market opportunity is second home buyers. Again, they're not looking for headaches. They're looking for things that are more carefree. And even the general buyer always, I mean, the, the general trend is people prefer newer homes over older homes. And obviously, there are people that like older homes, but the vast majority of people prefer newer homes. And even that is reflected in, in this data that shows that newer homes sold not only faster but for a higher price on a square foot basis. But we also noted that there was only one house sold that was built after 2021, versus 40% that were over 100 years old. So that tells me that there is a crime need for more housing in this area to meet that demand that likely exists, not to mention new residents that you might want to attract, i.e. second home buyers, retirees, and people wanting to relocate to the area. So obviously, we see a strong need for new housing. So that brings us to scenario B.
Okay, so continuing on with this story, before you go off that slide. Speaking of irrigation, when we get into concept B, now we're going from nine holes to 18 holes. So on the 18-hole study, we did include the option of building the, a new storage pond down at the bottom ground, what would I say? That'd be north of the clubhouse on the other side of the interstate. There's, along the river, there is some land there that you could create a storage pond off of the river and then have it big enough that you could easily irrigate the golf course, pump it up and irrigate.
I think that's city-owned property.
Yes, where we put it is on the city-owned property. There's, there's a spot where it changes, but yes. Okay, so if you go to the next slide, this, I'm sorry, go back one more, John. So the, the red here is the, is the land that's owned by a handful of private landowners. That's the area that we're going to expand the golf. If you go to the next slide, you'll see we're expanding to the south, and that's where the next nine holes are at. You'll see that there are these kind of tan pods, and then there's a couple of white ones. So these are the residential opportunities. That's why John was talking about the residential opportunities in the slide before. So we have single-family homes, we have a mixture of estate lots, we have, we have more kind of apartment-style living over here, we have more condos, we have patio homes, we have, and then a mixture of more single-family and estate. We wanted to have a big cross-section of real estate opportunities for people to, to buy. The land that the golf sits on is actually, as a golf architect, it's exciting to see. There's a nice big draw that works through the site. There's a lot of great holes that could fit down in that land that would just be spectacular. To me, this land is every bit as good, I would even say better, than the Cougar Canyon land, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But.
Where's your clubhouse in the picture?
Good question. The clubhouse stays in the same location on concept B. Maintenance is essentially in the same location, same clubhouse. We're just improving upon the existing clubhouse. Okay. The, this is the Zoomed-in version, which, like I say, this nine, oh, and this nine holes that's here, that's essentially the concept A2 that we just talked about. So we're just building on this story. That was A1, this is, this is all of A2. And now we just expand to the south to the residential and the new golf holes. Okay, so on this concept and the concept A2, when we talk about this iconic bridge, we showed a picture of an example suspension bridge that could go over that canyon. We, we have done research and, and we feel that the location of that iconic bridge in relationship to the location of the interstate with all that traffic that's driving by, not only are you going to see these dynamic golf holes when you're looking up the canyon, which right now is just overgrown, but it's such a great viewpoint when you're entering into the city to see this magnificent bridge and these great golf holes that are situated playing around it, that we wanted to give you a little bit of an artistic rendering of what we think this could be, not only for, not only from a golf course point of view, but talk about a sales point of view for Trinidad for people coming in and eye-catching with tourism saying, gosh, I got to go check that place out.
Now, just to add to, first of all, those red lines there are the ball.
Sorry, yeah.
So, you know, if you're wondering what that is, it shows you the flight path of the ball. But, you know, golfers, you know, they drive past this, they see carts going across this iconic bridge, and they're going to say, wow, I want to go drive across that bridge. I mean, it's going to look really special. I mean, it's going to look really special. And we also have this old going-down-the-canyon that's coming right at them. So it's going to have a huge visual impact, which is just unlimited free marketing. Because you've got 30,000 cars that are going past this site every day. Plus, these other nine holes, most of that land would be visible from the freeways coming southbound. So you'll see a lot of the golf course. And now currently, you see this much of the golf course from the interstate. You don't know it's there.
There's nothing that's going to match having that be, no sign that you're going to put up that says, "Come play our golf course," that's going to match people driving by and seeing great golf holes and seeing the beauty, the beautiful vista. And you, like John said, you have two of them as you're driving in. This is only one of the two of the vistas you could create. So obviously, now we're getting into costs. Now, this gets more expensive. Now, our costs on the golf course, they're up to 15, a little over 15 million. And our infrastructure costs, which is still netting, there's, now we have roadwork and parking. So that includes some of the roadwork accessing some of the residential development. Yes.
That's a good question. Here, who knows that, where does the cost of the land coming in?
I'm going to. I'll let John get into that in a second.
Good question.
Yes, that is a good question. So anyway, that's, here we are. We're 15 on golf and all in, you're a little over $20 million for concept B.
All right, when we look at the resort 18-hole, first of all, we carried this out to 20 years because of the residential. We wanted to show the full impact of it. But you can see the total, $95 million over 25 years is what the golf course on its own will be generating in revenue. When we add in the land payments, works out to be $65,000 a year and construction payments, and take all that into consideration, the city would net $4.25 million. That's money that comes back to the city in your pocket above all the costs. This equals to a ROI of 5.9% per year. Remember, A2 was .9 and A1 was negative 3.2. So you can see how much we've elevated that. Now, that's just the golf course taken in isolation. Now, let's look at the residential. Over, I will point this out. Over here, we indicate the parcels and we indicate what the estimated price will be. And over here is the development cost that we anticipate. So that's, and we look at the year-one pricing. But the bottom line is that the land cost for the golf and residential is about $450,000. The development cost is about $5 million. And when we add in, now, for these projections, we assume the city's developing it themselves. Because that's the easiest way to show you the impact of this. Now, in reality, you probably find a developer to do all of this. But this does show you what can happen. And we see that, oh, I didn't change the sign. Over 20 years, the sale of the lots will generate another $2 million that goes into your pocket. That's over and above the cost of the development and the acquisition cost. So when we put this together, we're adding the residents, we're adding new residents to this area. But these are in a golf course development, so a higher percentage of them are going to be golfers. So the residential component is going to help the golf. And so what we look at is what kind of impact. And now we see that your higher income, in fact, we see a 40% increase in the net operating income and a dramatic 342% increase in the net cash flow and generating a positive ROI of 8.1%. And that's the difference between the golf by itself and then you add in all these residents that are, and keep in mind, the non-golf residents are still going to come and eat at the clubhouse, right? Occasionally, or drink at the bar or whatever. So even the non-golfers will be benefiting the operation. So pros and cons. The residential development, I'm going to go back here real quick because I didn't explain the phases. We, in this projection, we show four phases with a total of 50 single families, 10 estate lots, 61, every place has a different terminology. I call them villas. These are maintenance-free townhomes that are detached. And that is the most popular building, residence you can put on the golf course. Seniors love them because they're single-floor living, they're on the golf course, they're maintenance-free. Same with second home buyers, love those things. So we've got them. And then we also have regular townhomes, 62 of them, those are attached. And then we put in 200 apartments because we see crime need for housing for people that can't afford to buy their own home. So we're trying to address all the needs that we can with one project. So anyway, it does require substantial additional land, which can put the city in an adversarial relationship with current landowners. That's obviously a negative. You do have higher operating costs, which obviously, when you're increasing your expenses, you're increasing your risk. But the, and we're also, positives, I'm getting rid of potable water. The ROI should be substantially higher. We're bringing a lot more tourists into the area with this one that I'll go into greater detail when we talk about the economic impact of all of this. So next, we want to talk about Cougar Canyon. And before we go into it, I think everybody here is familiar with Cougar Canyon. And the immediate minds to a lot of these people may be, "Well, haven't we been here before? Didn't we try a resort 18-hole course with residential before? And, oh my God, what a disaster." So I think it's important to understand why it failed. And there are a lot, a lot of reasons that I won't enumerate everything. But let's highlight the big ones. One of them, obviously, from the course relied on residential development. And you couldn't pick the worst time to build real estate in this country, at least for the last 100 years, than when they were doing it. But there are other two issues that I think might have doomed the project anyways, even without the real estate crisis. The first one is they didn't put the resort hotel in first. You should have had, if you're going to build a resort golf course, you should have the hotel in place at the same time you open the golf course. That's just natural. So you're putting yourself in a money-losing situation on the golf course right up front because you don't have that resort hotel helping to support it. But the other big thing, and this is a flaw that I see in developments all the time, and I do a lot of work with golf course developments, is the developers get greedy and they want to get paid quickly, so they sell lots to whoever they will buy. So you end up with people who buy the lots as an investment with no intention of building a house. Or if they're going to build it, they're buying the lot now and they'll build a house in 20 years when they retire. Well, what happens? You end up with a development that has no housing on it and it looks like a failed development, which decreases the marketability of that development over time. Because who wants to buy into a failed development? There's no houses in there. It can't be a successful development. But more importantly, from a golf standpoint, you're not adding any golfers to the golf course. Nor is the city benefiting at all from an economic impact standpoint. Because there's no houses, you're not getting any of the tax revenue from the houses. So those are some of the critical things that kind of doomed Cougar Canyon. And I apologize to anybody who might have been involved. Now, I'll turn it back over to Kevin.
So not a ton to share about Cougar Canyon because like John said, I mean, we're all familiar. We did go and we walked every hole we, well, we got that.
We borrowed a pickup.
Borrowed a pickup truck. And let me tell you, there was some overgrown areas and we actually ripped off the side-view mirror of the pickup truck on accident.
Thank you, Carl Gigs.
Anyway, the course is completely abandoned. It's completely naturalized. You can see the features that are out there, the greens, the bunkers, irrigation system. You can see the old irrigation lake. It's really hard to imagine what the cost scenario would be. Our obvious thought initially was it's got to be more cost-effective. But by the time you add up having to build all new greens, regrass everything, probably the irrigation system probably has to be completely replaced with all the pumps, the irrigation pond, the liner is completely cracked. You still need a clubhouse, you still need a maintenance facility, but it does have good bones. It's not a bad golf course. It looks nice for Nicholas Course. I mean, I'm not a fan of all Nicholas golf courses, but this one I thought was pretty darn nice. But then we added it all up and we came up with about $13 million that has to go into it to get that golf course back on its feet. Now, I will say, there is opportunity in that $13 million to have it come down a little bit because there's some unknowns. How do we know if the entire irrigation system has to be replaced? In a situation like that, you don't know until you fire it up and turn it on. We had to make the assumption that it would need to be replaced, but we didn't know. So, and then there's, restroom structures need to be redone, maintenance facility, clubhouse, still need a parking lot. So that $13 million becomes $18 million. And that's not that different than concept B that we just talked about.
It's still savings. You know, saving about $3.5 million over what B was.
What did you do with the motel?
Sorry?
I had a question.
Yeah.
You just said that it failed because of the motel. What?
Because of what?
You said Cougar Canyon, one of the big issues was the resort motel that wasn't there. Is that included in the cost there?
No, because we, there is so many legal entanglements with that property and with the residential that we did not include anything to do with it. We just looked at the golf.
Which is way beyond any financial feasibility so you could possibly envision where you're talking.
We're hands off.
Thank you, thank you. Love that comment.
And Les was very influential in that. So, you know, we're looking at $92 million over 20-year period, which is not quite as strong as B was, and we'll get into some of the reasons why in a minute. Cash flow over 20 years is negative $446,000, which is just a little bit under B, and an ROI of 5.1%, which is again, a little bit under B. So even though it's less expensive to build, it's not generating as much return as B did. And the advantages of this, though, is the TGC can remain open, so you'd end up with two golf courses. And it will attract more tourists. The necklace name is powerful. You'll have a brand-new clubhouse that's going to attract more banquet business. Be much nicer than the current called clubhouse, although not as historic, obviously. There'll be no netting required. And there is residential infrastructure in place, although Les would have a field in front to get it untangled. The cons are it's much less convenient for both residents and tourists. You can't beat the visibility of what we have now. I mean, you've got your own access, you've got your own exit practically. It's going to cost more to maintain this course because of how spread out it is than B would be. And it may take 10 years or more to untangle the legal quagmire that the residential will take. And it would require a lift station to develop it much further anyway. So now we go to our Cadillac. The Cadillac is going to, the whole hog, a 27-hole facility with a resort hotel. And before we get into Kevin's, let me talk briefly about what the advantages are from an operator's standpoint of the 27-hole golf course. And there are many. One, it obviously has 50% more capacity, so you have more revenue opportunity. From a tourist standpoint, though, you end up with three different 18-hole layouts. Now, if you're a traveling golfer, if you're on a golf trip, you don't want to play the same course over and over and over again if you're going to stay in town more than one day. So the fact that you have three different layouts gives people that variety that they seek. It allows for larger tournaments. You know, your cap right now, right now, you you can only put in about 50 people, which in an 18-hole course, you have about 110 people at one time. With a 27-hole course, obviously, it could go up to 150. But it also allows for an 18-hole tournament and daily fee play to occur at the same time, which doubles your revenue opportunity. It allows for more golfers to play during prime time. Think of it in the summer. If you're, you know, it's 95 degrees in the peak of the summer, golfers want to play early in the morning. Well, right now, they only have one tee time of opportunity. Here, you'd have three, so, because you can start among each nine. And so that creates more opportunity during your prime time, which helps you dramatically increase your revenue. You also can potentially rest nine holes during slow times or do maintenance while still having 18 holes. So that ends up improving your overall course quality.
Okay, so on concept C, continuing on that story, we still, over here on this side, we still have the nine-hole course. We still have the concept B, which added the other nine holes to the south. That remains the same. But now we're going on the other side of the interstate. When John mentioned this tunnel that goes under the road, I don't know how many of you are aware, but it's really, it's a drainage way, but it is massive. I mean, it must be 20 feet tall. It's huge. That goes under, right by Leonie's house.
I've heard of that. Interstate tunnels that aren't as big as that.
Yes. So that allows us to connect onto the other side. And then we added nine holes over here. Now, most of the properties here that are highlighted in red are owned by the same individual. But I think that you have already purchased some other land or in negotiations along the river walk or your river corridor. Now, when we get into, there's nine more holes that kind of go out and come back. Everything operates around the change here is that we would still keep the existing historic structure as a clubhouse that could be an event space. So that doesn't go away, but it doesn't become the hub as the pro shop. We would build a new resort.
Or the wrap museum.
We'd build a new resort hotel, parking lot, putting greens, and we'll zoom in on this area in just a bit. But if you go back one slide, you'll see all the residential, all the tan that you saw in concept B. Look at all of the additional opportunities when you go on the other side of the interstate. This land is equally as pretty as the land to the south. So it was quite interesting. We even incorporated along the river, having a trail system, which I know you're trying to get out to the lake with a trail system. So we incorporated a trail system along with the river. It also complements the golf. So they get this really nice walk that connects from downtown out to the lake. So this clubhouse area, this clubhouse area is pretty unique. Where you have your hotel, you've got your clubhouse, it's shared. But all the golf holes, all the nine holes come in and they connect to this resort hotel. But we even added these little villas that are on this. This is about an acre putting course. And if you haven't been on a putting, if you've been to Band and Dunes, they've got this putting course. They're quite fun. They're quite entertaining to go at. So we have these little villas that are, you can rent these cottages right next to the putting course. We imagine this to be lit at night. We even have its own bar and kind of serving areas as this entertainment venue, kind of à la Topgolf, but more classy Trinidad-style. That also feeds the driving range, the putting course. And we even included a miniature golf course over there, so we have more opportunity for tourism that are all out of this hub. And then we even included some pickleball courts in this central kind of entertainment hub. Now, if you go to the next slide, this is an example of a giant putting course with some housing at a very famous resort in the United States, where you can literally just walk right out your door and go putt. Some of our villas also sat where you could have a driving range, your own personal driving range. So you rent the villa or your little cottage and you could have your own balls and hit range balls. So we tried to be inventive in how all of this fit together and include golf items and non-golf items in this hub of a hotel resort area. Obviously twenty-seven holes, the costs, still they go up again. So now we're at twenty-seven million and with some of the roads, we're up to thirty-four million on the twenty-seven hole concept. So I'll let you dive into the numbers.
Now, this is where the numbers start really getting kind of ridiculous. Um, we're looking at a hundred and forty-five million. This is, the first part of this is just golf in isolation of the others. You just built the golf course and didn't build anything else other than the hotel. So over twenty years, you get a hundred and forty-five million dollars of revenue. Your net cash flow after all the acquisition costs, construction costs, all of that are taken into consideration. You've made fifteen million dollars into the city's coffers. That's over and above everything else. That equals out to a return on investment of six point seven percent. Now, we've been... I'm missing a slide here. Well, let's talk about the residential development. Well, first let's talk about the resort hotel. Uh, you noticed that I had a, in our illustration, we had it as a kind of a, a convex shape. Now, this is up on the top of that cliff that overlooks I-20. And just imagine coming southbound, you see this glistening all glass hotel that's maybe six or eight stories tall, looking out over, probably lit up all at night. It will be a, again, a huge free marketing campaign, uh, just as a physical presence. Kevin already talked about the amenities that we're including. When I did the projections, I only looked at a hundred and eighty day season. Now, the golf course is open all year round, so I'm not even counting the people who would be playing, uh, at the hotel, from the hotel out of season. So again, trying to be conservative. I was conservative in the occupancy rates. Phasing, the residential will be over seven phases. Of course, we're getting a lot more homes. A hundred and seventy-nine single family, uh, fifty-eight estate lots, eighty-eight villas, a hundred and forty-five townhomes, instead of two hundred apartments, for a total of six hundred and seventy, more than double what we had with B. And those are the acquisition costs, uh, to the, to the right. And development costs of twenty-five million. So the combined acquisition is two point nine million if you paid cash. And the development cost would be twenty-eight million and change, you know, plus twenty-nine million again, if you paid up from cash. But when you finance it all out and you look at what your lot sales revenue would be, you end up with a positive cash flow of twenty-five million dollars. Twenty-five million dollars to the city's banking accounts. Now, let's look at the residential impact on the golf course. Our revenue jumps up. And keep in mind, you know, again, people who aren't golfers are still going to want to come and, and drink at that range bar, you know, that they, they'll enjoy the, the miniature golf, they'll enjoy the, with the kids and things. So there's all sorts of different opportunities. These numbers do not include, um, the restaurant revenue because that's going to be part of the hotel. We did not include miniature golf revenue. We assume that's part of the hotel. This is just the golf course. And you can see the bottom line, uh, twenty year net cash of flow of a positive four million dollars, which works out to be seven point eight percent per year. So putting all these together, this is a chart of the net cash flows for each scenario. And you can see A1, A2 are pretty flat. A1 never gets above sea level. That's an underwater scenario. Um, A2, we didn't extend it out, but it would have that bump up at, after year sixteen like the others do. But it does not have anywhere near the peak. And you do start to see some separation between C and B. So now, let's take a look at economic impact. Now, we looked at two different things. We looked at direct impact. This is money that comes directly into the city, the government. And then we looked at indirect. This is money that comes into the area's economy, uh, as a indirect benefit. So we already talked about the golf providing twenty million dollars in that cash flow. But the residential, you get revenue from different things. You get the lot sales, but you also own the utilities, so you get water, you get electrical. You also get construction permits. So you've got all sorts of different revenue sources that you're getting from the residential. And combined, that equals fourteen million dollars to the positive going into your bank account from residential. And oh, by the way, the county gets six hundred thousand dollars. Tourism, um, it's, it's small change, but you do get, um, a hotel tax. You also get some sales tax, so, you know, about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So when we put all of these together, the direct benefit in Scenario B is a thirty-four and a half million dollar surplus going into the city coffers and one point six million going into the county coffers. Now, let's look at the indirect. This is all the spending. So the golf generates a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars that's going into the area's economy in terms of revenue. The residential is, um, generating about ninety-nine thousand, ninety-nine million in construction. And then you've got the, uh, direct resident spending and then the ripple effect. Um, that all totals up to seven hundred and nineteen million dollars going into the area's economy from Scenario B. It's a huge impact over twenty years. Plus, we're creating jobs. Uh, the golf course alone will be creating somewhere between twenty and thirty jobs, um, each year. Residents of construction, um, will be creating temporary jobs during the building of each house. And then there's a ripple effect that occurs. The National Association of Realtors estimates that one permanent job is created for every two new houses. So that's really an important figure, that twenty-seven hundred and eleven, those are permanent jobs. So now let's look at Scenario C. Here, the golf impact is thirty-three million, uh, which is almost the total for all of, uh, the direct for Scenario B. The residential's impact is forty-one million to the positive, they're going directly into your, uh, city coffers. And tourism, uh, because you're getting that resort hotel, we're getting a benefit of the, uh, of several things. You're getting the hotel tax from lodging tax, um, feeding into what, uh, we talked about earlier today. Um, but you're also getting, uh, sales tax from everything that goes on in the hotel. Uh, then you're also got the impact from other golf courses. Add it all together and that's a twelve and a half million dollar, um, bonus coming in. Then, put it all together and we see that the direct impact is over double what C, B was. We're at eighty, nearly eighty-four million dollars over twenty years impact, or an average of four million dollars into the city coffer, uh, over that twenty year period. And the county, oh, by the way, gets about two million. Now, let's look at the indirect. And I want to draw your attention to the big number. Same calculations, but instead of seven hundred thousand, seven hundred million, we're at adding one point four billion with a B, one point four billion dollars to the area's economy over a twenty year period from this project alone. Now, that does not include all the other things that are going to come with it. You have a successful development like this, you're going to get more developers coming in to build developments. You're going to get more tourist attraction coming in, probably get a water park, you'll get all these other things. But that's one point four billion just from this project alone. Plus, we're adding a ton more jobs to the area, so you're growing your economy. So when you put it on a chart, you can see the difference between C and B is, is pretty big from a direct impact, but it is absolutely enormous when we look at indirect impact. So, bottom line, C makes a whole lot of sense. You know, we'll talk about, you know, there are options that... What we didn't mention, and I forgot to, when we were doing C, in our projections, we assumed you build the first, the new eighteen first and keep the old nine running while you're building it, uh, just to keep the current golfers happy. It may be more pragmatic instead to build the, um, uh, east eighteen holes first and keep the nine holes across the, uh, interstate as a future development. Yeah, that's probably the way I would do it. So I call that kind of VC modification. But, yeah, we just want to give you some ideas. What are the advantages of B C over Cougar Canyon? Location, location, location. Visibility, the access, the proximity to downtown. You've got better scenery in our opinion, uh, you've got lower maintenance costs, no bad vibes. And you've got immediate residential opportunity and, in our, uh, opinion, uh, better long-term viability. So we would be recommending doing, doing either B or C over doing Cougar Canyon. Finally, just, these are some ways you can reduce the city's risk. Now, obviously finding a master developer who wants to take on the whole project would be ideal. You might be able to split the project up, find a golf person and a residential person. You could look at a city-county partnership. And I did have some conversations with the county who expressed interest. Uh, obviously I wasn't getting that commitment, but, you know, there's a conversation we had. We could reduce the cost. You know, we deliberately, I think, overestimated the cost of the land acquisitions. If we were negotiating hard, uh, we may be able to get it a lot less expensive. In our report, we talked about a number of ways we can reduce the construction costs. And obviously the financing, might be able to get better terms and, uh, three and a half percent over fifteen years. But you could also look at alternative financing, a, a public-private venture, getting grants. I know that's something the city has been extremely successful in doing. Naming rights are becoming a extremely popular option for cities. And with this thing, you've got a lot of naming opportunities. You've got the course, you've got the clubhouse, you've got individual holes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, the driving range. You could look at a capital lease for the golf course. This is where you, in exchange for a long-term lease, you know, twenty-five, fifteen, ninety-nine years, the golf company contributes hard cash towards the construction, you know, several million dollars or whatever. You could modify C by delaying the nine, like we talked about. And of course, you need to have professional management, um, or you're at risk. So, thank you. I appreciate your attention and, and hanging with us. I know there's a lot to get through. But, um, I couldn't think of ways to shorten it without leaving some important stuff out. So, um, open it up for, for questions?
Okay. Um, let's see. I, I have a lot of thoughts about this. One of them I was thinking is, I don't know. In order for us to take on anything that's a large kind of expedition like this, I think it would have to be something that the city perceived was in its best interest to, to own and operate a golf course. And I'm wondering if it, is it something better in the private sector, to what the private sector do?
Well, I, you know.
Or how, how, if there's any benefits?
Um, certainly. You know, there's, and we go through in the, in the report, we talk about the various options that you could have in that. Um, there's give and take with getting, you know, privatizing the golf course. I certainly would explore that option. But, you know, the, the problem that you face is that right now Trinidad isn't on the golf map. You know, you're not even a consideration. You're not a thought. So to get a, uh, private company that's going to be interested in this, the city's going to have to take a major role to show that this project, um, is going to work. In other words, that, that the residential development is going to happen. Uh, the resort hotel, if we're going to do that, is going to happen. You get those pieces in place and then the golf course, yes, you can find it. In fact, the hotel developer, there are many, many hotel operators out there that own golf courses because it's a map, right? So, um, I could see very strongly getting a, um, private developer that would take on both the golf course and the hotel. Absolutely. But, you know, the reason I did it this way is because you now had ammunition to go to these developers and show them, look, this is what, you know, plug, plug your name in for the city and this is what your take is. And it shows a pretty positive return for that.
But one of the primary things I like about either B or C is that it does increase the visibility of the golf course significantly. And I think that would be a beautiful way to come into Trinidad, to see that.
Oh, excellent.
That, that is very compelling to me.
Especially with the hotel, like I said, being an iconic, uh, high visibility. And hopefully it would, you know, it'd have to be, uh, very aesthetically pleasing. It'd instantly become an icon for the area. And, you know, what we can't talk about, because I can't put a number to it. But this is a transformative project. This changes everything. Because right now, you know, you're trying to convert, and doing a very good job of converting over to, uh, a tourism-based economy and you've got waterflood assets. The problem is you don't have that one big attraction that's going to bring people in, that people, that's going to drive it. You know, um, hikers, they don't spend a lot of money. You know, the, the people that are going to come and, and visit this for the natural beauty and scenery, they don't spend a lot of money. Golfers do. Uh, and you're bringing in residents. That's going to help the economy. And it's, you know, I, you know, I've, I've been a broker for, uh, almost thirty years, no, more than that. Oh, God, almost forty years now. So, you know, I've, I've been in the real estate industry for longer than I was in the golf industry. And trust me, um, you know, when I look at this area, I see oozes of opportunity for seniors, for second home buyers, for people who are wanting to have, um, a nice place to live with a lower cost of living. They want the Colorado experience, but they can't afford, you know, they can't afford some of the other golf resort areas. Uh, think of your professionals, you know, doctors, lawyers, you know, accountants. They would love this golf course. They would love, this gives them that amenity that kind of pushes you over the hump, if you will, as to being a desirable place to, to live for these people. So I, I really can't, uh, overstate, in my opinion, how much this is going to impact this city in a positive way, uh, whether it's a golf course, whether it's a residential, or whether it's a resort hotel. All three of those are going to, in and of themselves, are going to have a huge impact on the city.
If the quality of the land wasn't as good as it is, I wouldn't be as excited. I just wouldn't. You can build a good golf course and you can get people to come down, but you have the ability to build a great golf course. Great golf courses is where people travel to come and see them over and over and over again. That land is special, uh, both, on both sides of the interstate.
And that's not just from a golf state point. That is probably, if not the best, it's way up there in terms of, uh, residential opportunities in this area. It's just frickin' gorgeous. Um, so...
I'm going to add one other thing. I, I don't think that either John or I going into this had any idea which way this was going to steer. We, it organically went that way with the residential coming in and then looking at the other opportunities of the land. And we looked at each other and we were like, we have to study this. We, we, this is too good of an opportunity to not look at this. And so we, we dove in headfirst and, and took the, took everything that was according to the contract and we just said, we need to... and we just said, we need to share this information.
And in fact, you know, just to add on to that, sorry. Our bias was Cougar Canyon. We thought Cougar Canyon was going to be the answer, we really did. And then we started delving into it. And, you know, it just makes, B and C just makes so much more sense.
I wanted to pass it to Tom, but I didn't want to comment. I also picked up on the fact that, we're kind of glancing over the fact that the A1 proposal, which is just fixing the course as it is, is, you know, foresee any way that that can be feasible economically?
No.
In the short term or in the long?
I would not, never recommend it. From an economic standpoint, from a return on investment standpoint, it's a money loser. It certainly improves the golf experience. The membership will love it, but that's such a small percentage of your population, you've got to tail wagging the dog. And, you know, because it doesn't do a darn thing for what your big moneymaker is, and that's tourism.
Awful lot of information to absorb in one hour. Irregardless, I wanted to ask you, you know, in your analysis of everything, everything looks good on paper, and everybody's a visionary, of course, but everything's predicated on money and dollar signs and revenue. How accurate are your projected calculations over X amount of time? You said twenty years, fifteen years? Are those semi-accurate in all of your expertise and your...
If you're asking me historically, have my projections been accurate? You know, I'll have two answers for that. One is, I'm a consultant. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink it. So if a municipality doesn't follow my recommendations, they're not going to see the results that I have. There's one project that I maintain control over, that, and I included it in the report, where I actually had control of the project for the first two years of the operation. And in that project, when I made my presentation, and we were recruiting a golf management company to take over the golf course, and they looked at my projections, and, you know, he actually swore, explained things at me, and said, I didn't know what I was doing, and these numbers are just wild, you can't possibly do that, you know, it's ridiculous. Two years later, they doubled what I had projected. In those cities where I've had, where most of my recommendations have been implemented, the projections have proved to be conservative. They've exceeded my projections. But unfortunately, a lot of people don't follow my advice, and I had no control with that. But yes, I do believe these projections are conservative.
So, talking about Cougar Canyon, do you believe that the, if the hotel was already established and was already finished, irregardless, wasn't there a shortfall of equity with the investors? Do you think that would still hold true?
As I explained, you know, the golf course itself was successful. It was, in fact, at the point of just about breaking even in its four years. And that's without benefit of a hotel and marginal benefit of a residential development. So from a golf standpoint, that golf course would have been successful. What killed it was the residential, because, you know, the ownership was intertwined. So when the residential failed, the golf course failed. It was not the golf course's fault, it was the residential's fault, and the lack of a hotel opening. And again...
I just wanted to add, sorry, I know we have a couple more questions. I just want to make sure everyone knows. Obviously, today's not the last day we're going to talk about this. It's a lot of information to digest. So, today's just kind of the presentation phase. I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on that.
And if we need to come back, we will.
Frank is going to pass. Danny?
I just, I just had a quick question, that's just for curiosity. How many municipalities out there opened these resort titles titled golf courses?
Quite a few, actually. And it, it really, I mean, if you turn on the, if you watch golf, and you look at the US Open, you know, a number of those courses are public municipality-owned golf courses. So, yeah, municipalities have, you know, when I first came here, I talked about the mission statement. For a lot of municipalities, having that icon was a mission statement. Having something that was an economic driver for the municipality was the motivation behind the golf course. And that has proven to be a successful strategy.
Don't misunderstand the word resort as it relates to municipality. The resort is kind of a, just a word that is describing the level of which we're trying to achieve. So, while Concept C does start to get into resort-style hotel, other amenities all around it, Concept B is the quality, the golf is the quality of that, but it doesn't offer all of those same amenities as Concept C. So I don't want that, that term to be misconstrued in your head.
I use resort here as a substitute for upper end, because our target is to bring tourists. You know, we're not looking, the purpose of this isn't to make the local golfers happy. The purpose of this is to make the city as a whole happy, and to be an economics driver.
Well, we also, we travel a lot, so we actually choose, we choose our destinations off of those, actually. Because normally, I don't just, not to sound too on one side of it, but we go to those locations, because if there is a golf course, everything's going to be pretty much top art. And that's why we want to stay there, and we want to be in that location, because it's the ultimate of luxury, that's why we choose those. So that's, I was kind of curious about that.
Thank you. I will make one more prediction, you know, and talk about the... I'll make this prediction for you. If you do B or C, my prediction is within five years, Cougar Canyon will be revitalized. And...
The golf course.
The golf course. And I make that statement not as a negative, because we would welcome Cougar Canyon. Because when you're, again, the local market is not the target, tourist is the target. And having multiple resort courses in an area significantly adds to the attraction of that. Because as you probably know, if you have the choice of having, being able to play two or three different resort courses while you're playing, you're going to want to do that. So, instead of getting golf travelers to just stay one night on their way to Denver or other places, they'll make this their destination. They'll come here for their vacation. And that's why, you know, we'd welcome Cougar Canyon being, coming proactive down the road.
I hear the words consultant, developer, and architect.
Yes, sir.
Why wouldn't you lead with housing first before sending this, all these numbers up for golf? Why wouldn't you cushion the blow with, hey, I've got an idea, let's do some housing around the golf course, and then to see why?
They go together very well. Golf housing and residential developments sell for, on average, twenty percent more than a comparable house outside of development, and they sell faster. Plus, again, you know, when you look at your target markets, having a golf course property is going to be much more attractive to a large percentage of your seniors, your retirees, your second-home buyers. So they just go hand in hand. So, yeah, it's natural to have both.
It just seems like you would go for the juggler, and go for the money, and talk about housing development. Well, saying we're in a housing crisis, that would be the...
Well, the housing alone won't bring you tourists. The housing just brings you residents.
An income.
The golf course is going to bring the tourists, which is where you're getting that $1.4 billion impact.
What's the, what's the, what's the timeframe for the golf course to be developed? The way you would see it, is it...
Well, you know, it depends on which scenario. We carried it out to twenty years. But in Development C, I think it was turning a profit in year six. That's after you accounted for the financing of the construction and the lack in acquisition and all of that. So it turns a profit pretty darn quickly, relatively speaking.
Mr. Williams?
So some of this is just stating the obvious, obviously. And I really like the vision. If money is no object, I mean, the idea of driving past the bridge, seeing people enjoy that amenity, driving through a golf wonderland to, people like golf. Absolutely. And that is going to draw a lot of people, I get that. And Trinidad really does need some sort of anchor industry, if you will. And it seems, it seems like we have the climate to gear around and support that. If it was something we could do easily, it would be a no-brainer. But obviously, it's not easy. And usually in life, the things that aren't easy have the highest reward, right? So, I did have a question. And I don't know what level you could have a developer come in and do that, this at, whether it include the golf course, the residential, a total package, including a hotel. I don't know if there's anybody who'd do that, or you have to break it up and do it individually. But what, what percentage of ROI has to exist before you can get a pool of developers that would be willing to look at it, you know?
Well, I think ten percent would be the magic number that's going to draw the most interest. And we're very close to that. And this is where the city can do some horse trading by offering some tax incentives or absorbing some of the costs, because the city's going to be benefiting from that indirect impact, no matter what. So it'd be city's advantage to offer some incentive for the developers. So it shouldn't be too hard to get over the ten percent margin. And keep in mind a couple things. One, this was a hundred percent financed. There wasn't any equity put into this project, which is a, not a real good way of doing it, and not likely to happen. But we wanted to be conservative, so that's why we picked the most conservative approach, which is a hundred percent financing. And, you know, one thing I also want to mention, going back to the residence for just a second. We talked about the high visibility of the golf course on I-25. The same is true for residential. You know, you're going to see your premium housing on full display from people driving down I-25. That is just going to dramatically elevate the image of this community. So, you know, there's just, you know, I could go on and on and on.
If we were to do the upper end, twenty-seven, with everything, just hypothetically, would, and it was operated by some outside agency in the end, would there still be the availability to stipulate that they would offer the Trinidad card, for lack of a better word that you said?
Oh, sure, you can negotiate anything that you want to do.
Yeah, because I mean, while, I think it's incumbent me, looking at, you know, the whole town, we really don't want to alienate, isolate, or ostracize local golfers, right? So that would be good. If we were to, you know, put our collective heads together and get a package that brought the ROI to within ten percent, whether that's through, you know, like high-match, or lower fees of taxes of any sort, and I know this would be speculative, but let's say we had a ten percent ROI on paper, and we offered that for RFP. In your experience, how many qualified parties would respond to that, would you think?
Well, I think what I would probably do is, before I did an RFP, you know, one thing to talk about C with is, you know, I would hire a project manager to kind of oversee this whole process, because I don't, you know, you need somebody with the expertise, number one, which doesn't exist within the city now. And that person would be negotiating with select developers upfront. So before you ever issue an RFP, you would have a confidence level that you're going to be successful. And in answer to your question, I honestly don't know. You know, there are a number of companies out there that fit the profile that could take on the whole project. But you also have, you know, we're even talking to one kind of offhand that we know that might be interested in taking on the entire project. It's a single investor, a lot more money than I do. But, you know, so the door's wide open. And I think, I think we might be very surprised. We've got some locals who have the financial wherewithal to take on this project. And that would always be your best opportunity, because they haven't had local ties, they're going to be really invested in it. So, I just know that this project could be successful.
One last question, if I may. You mentioned the irrigation, the holding pond. Have you looked into what sort of water rights that would take if we have the existing water rights, or are they out?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, we've had that conversation with our water department. So, the water's there, that's not, that's not a concern. Different scenarios, we may pump it as groundwater, which we have rights to, and then put a holding pond that might drain a little bit during the day for irrigation, and get refilled at night. We've also talked about scenarios where we even pump it up potentially from, you know, the river, divert water from Trinidad Lake into the river from there. So there are options, but we definitely have the water. And if we, you know, get to the point where we're doing a development like this, it only makes sense that we move towards a non-potable at this point, and come up with the best-case scenario.
And by the way, that's a huge selling point to potential developers.
Is there, is there any room for incorporating the irrigation pond for recreational use in the area?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, that's a much bigger discussion about reuse as a whole for our open spaces. But that is something that I think we really need to start thinking about over the next few years. How do we get for non-potable options? Look at zero-scape options as well, does it make sense that we're watering things? But I think as we move board, develop, get a world-class golf course, and get all this economic development revenue in, we can talk about reuse systems. But absolutely, I would want to design this so it does tie in for future reuse in other places.
That was part of the reason that we located it where we did. While it's conceptual in nature, we did pay attention to the access to downtown, the access to existing parks, the access to the golf course. How would you get water there in a big enough spot where you could store that kind of water as well? So, obviously, there's more study that goes into that, but it seemed logical, it seemed logical.
And, you know, from an operating standpoint, there's no reason why you couldn't incorporate things like paddle boats, fishing, and things like that, it'd be natural.
The golf course community that I live around has an irrigation storage pond that offers fishing, hiking around it. They stock it with fish. And then you can get a little floater out there, kind of like the paddleboard, the little floater, and go fish in it as well. So it's, it's done, it's not unusual.
Thank you, I have no questions.
Thank you.
Well, I have some more, and just...
No, I know, but this is just the beginning of this discussion. I'm a, I'm a numbers girl. So when I see all these numbers flashing before me, my knees are knocking, my heart is going. When you're talking about this development, and I'm looking at the size of our budget now, it's almost half of what our annual budget is to operate the city of Trinidad. So I think, me as a council, have to decide what we want to do. Because I've looked at the golf course only as a quality-of-life amenity for people that live in this area. It's a caveat, it's an extra, it's a cherry on the sundae that people come in to golf, okay? So we have to decide, do we want to keep it as a quality-of-life facility as... as just nice amenity for this residence? Or do we want to step it up and actually make it a money-making project? I will tell you right now, I've been on council six and a half years and we've never made money on anything. My hope is at the end of the year, the revenues minus the expenses equals zero instead of in the red. So there's a lot, you know, by the time, if this project continues on, by the time it comes to fruition, I will be part of the dirt that you're giving up. Because I mean, we're talking, and I'm saying this to remind myself, remind council that this is a huge project that's going to take a while to come to fruition if it does. So you know, I have to, in my mind, as one member of council, try to figure out. Because there's so many variables and there's so many unknowns in what you presented to us. When you're talking about the housing around the golf course, will Trinidad, at the point that this project comes to fruition, will Trinidad be able to support that many new housing units? I mean, we're assuming that Trinidad's going to grow. You know, and I'm just saying, this is, I want you to know my thought process as I'm going, trying to digest what you presented to us. And for the people, I know the majority of people in the audience are interested more in the immediate need of the golf course. So you know, it's an asset. We have to decide how we're going to treat that asset going forward.
Well, Madam Mayor, I fully agree with your assessment. First time I met with all of you, I stressed the importance of deciding what the mission statement was for the golf course. We have to keep in mind though, as an amenity, you're subsidizing this operation. So it is a negative cash flow currently and will be for the foreseeable future as it's currently being operated. The, you know, when, if you're a numbers person, you're going to love my report because it's just full of numbers and it explains where each number comes from. So they're not just pulled out of the sky. But I'll also mention that, you know, when I was doing the residential study, I talked to a number of realtors in the area, developers, brokers. So it's not just my opinion that I'm offering, this is kind of a collective opinion. You know, we just have to look at other towns that have done similar projects or that say, you know, offered the type of housing that, you know, Colorado's booming right now. It is absolutely booming. We're not because we don't have the inventory to offer. And you know, the residential, the nice thing about residential is you can go at the pace that your sales are going. So I don't see the absorption being an issue. The important thing from a city standpoint is that you tie up the land. So there is that opportunity to develop.
The other thing, the other thing on the golf side of it is when this was presented, I was trying to tell it as a story, right? A1 turned into A2, but basically A turned into B turned into C. It can be looked at in the exact same way. So don't look at C as though you have to eat that entire elephant, right? You can go and say, hey, let's fix what we have with A. With the I, that B is where we really want to go and C is an option. They build upon each other as long as the planning is done correctly.
Okay, so then I just have one question. So I was thinking along those thoughts as well, gradually going from one step to a bigger step to a bigger step. So if we invest money into the golf course to make it an 18-hole course, how easy is it to, well, let's say we improve the nine holes, the A2 option. We improve the golf course with the A2 option. How easy is it to transition and then add the extra nine holes? Is it more of a detriment to do it that way? Or is it better to do the whole 18 holes?
Well, it would obviously be better to do the whole 18 from a cost standpoint. Because the more you delay the construction, the higher the costs are going to be. Plus you have economies of scale at work, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But you also have to have the end goal in mind. And you can start with nine holes as long as you have that plan for the 18-hole expansion. Otherwise, you're going to be jurd-rigging things to make it fit rather than being a hole. Now, if this were my project, what I would do is, I think a resort hotel is really a huge key in this from an economic development standpoint, along with the residential. I mean, they all go together. But I would target looking, you know, having the conversations with resort operators to see if we could get that nailed down first. Because if you've got that, everything else is going to fall into place.
So you mentioned that you've seen other communities that have taken on a project of this magnitude that has made a difference. Is there any way you could email Mr. Ruder the cities that you're talking about? Because I like to see population.
Well, the, you know, it's hard to come up with an exact parallel.
No, I understand, but.
Yeah, because of the city size and isolation. What I do present in the report is a negative example. And this is a town in Nebraska.
Well, it's Valentine.
Valentine. Why don't you tell the story?
Well, the town of Valentine had a nine-hole golf course. And then they had this resort that came in called Perry Club. Very, very nice resort, destination kind of stuff, people are traveling. But that golf course was losing money year in, year out. And the city council was tired of it. And they said, we don't need that, we're tired of it. They got rid of it and it didn't take them, I don't know the exact amount of years, but let's say it didn't take them but five years to start to see the impact that it was having, that they weren't getting any hotel stays were down, restaurant use was down. All of the things that that nine-hole golf course helped in the indirect costs that John was talking about, they were noticing. So then they went back and built another nine holes. I also know of another one in Nebraska. It's called Wild Horse. It's in the town of Gothamburg. Now, they built a crazy good golf course, very, it was on a very natural piece of ground. That has grown to the point where now they are adding the accommodations because it is drawing people from hundreds of miles away to come and play that golf course. And they didn't have housing or accommodations. So now they've added those little stay and play packages as a part of that golf course.
What is the name?
It's called Wild Horse Golf Course in Gothamburg, Nebraska. Now, that's an 18-hole golf course. And I'm going to say that Gothamburg, I'd be surprised if it was more than 3,000 people. As a size of the town, it might be less.
There's no comparison between Nebraska and Colorado, right?
Look, I'm sure given a little bit of time, we can find a few others and we'd be happy to try.
No, I'm just kidding.
I did want to just throw in one more thing. I'm not a numbers girl, unfortunately. But this is one of the first things, the first ideas about Trinidad as a whole that's really jazzed me to think it's not just about targeting the tourists. It's about elevating life here so that people here see, we can do this stuff. If we do it wisely and prudently and not without a lot of input, we could do something really amazing with a city that would transform who is coming here, not only to visit but to live. And we do need more doctors. If we are going to have a retirement community, we need more doctors, we need more lawyers, we need more accountants, engineers, all manner of professional people. And I think this is the kind of thing that would draw people in.
Absolutely. The one, the one thing you have going for you is you have, a lot of people have land. And I would be talking about the western half, but what they don't have is water. You have both in abundance and a need with a housing shortage. And those all fit together. So that's what got us excited, that this makes sense.
And we are not, you know, you mentioned being an amenity. You're still being an amenity to the city. A much, much improved amenity that's going to appeal to a much wider market than the current operation is. So from an amenity standpoint, yeah, you're, you know, you're going to have a golf team at the high school. You're going to, you know, you're going to be able to do all sorts of new things.
So Mayor and Council, just one thing I wanted to mention as we wrap up here, because we should. But John's right. These guys did a lot more work than we asked them to do under the contract because you can see their passion for Trinidad. So I really want to thank them for going above and beyond. And so we're getting a lot of, as John puts it, value add to this study and a lot to think about. But we can keep putting along and see what we can see.
Or we could drive to the finish line.
Going to drive you to a German.
All right, gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We appreciate the opportunity. And I will extend, you know, if you need us to come back, you know, we'll be happy to do so as long as, you know, we get fairly, you know, travel costs of time.
We did fall in love with this town.
We want this to succeed and we'd love to be involved in it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we, we're not at the end of this as a work session, I have to pose a question. Council has nothing to do with anything. Couple of years ago, we requested that council reports be removed from the regular session to the work session. By the time we do council reports, nobody's here. Think about it so we can decide at our next meeting what we want to do with council reports. Thank you, Arthur.
If anybody wants, has any questions.